We need decisions being taken.
There is.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
I didn't hear the moment.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Hour, two hours.
Why wouldn't you have some larger areas?
That's right. You know, I think.
It's just, I'll make it up some other way.
Isn't it?
You have private time.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I'll ask, I'll ask the mayor of all the tools, you know. I don't want to ask. I want to be able to. When you, you know, like the one minute. I wouldn't do that. She's like half her. She's already weak. Cool. Yeah.
He always said it.
What would you like? Between me and.
Okay.
I call this committee of the whole meeting to order of the town of Gibson's April twenty second, twenty twenty five at one P M. And we're honored to be here on our traditional territories of the Skoomish Nation. Um, we need to approve the agenda first, moved by councillor Crowell, seconded by councillor Thompson, and all those in favor. The motion carries. And first up as a delegation, we have Chief Rob Michael here to report from the Gibsonson District Volunteer Fire Department, quarter one, twenty twenty five.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Membership is currently at full capacity with fifty firefighters, which is including our eight new recruits. Efforts are underway to get the recruits trained so they can begin responding to calls. Eight members from the fire department attended the climb the wall fundraiser for the B C Lung Foundation in Vancouver. The team ended up raising fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty six, with firefighter Lisa Stiver recognized as a top fundraiser for the event, collecting five thousand three hundred and sixty on her own. The focus of training for this quarter was wildfire preparedness, rapid intervention, firefighter survival, um, exterior operations and gas safety. And there was also a focus on some drills and skill maintenance. I should, I like, I like doing these reports because I think back and it's like, oh, that happened and that happened and that happened in three months. It seems like a lifetime ago. But one glaring omission in my report is that the firefighters also participated in the school district forty six junior fire academy hosted by the Seashell Fire Department. Over spring break, a number of students from across the district learned firefighting skills from fire service members across the region. The department is thrilled to be able to continue supporting this important program by sending instructors to teach alongside our mutual aid partners. The fire department responded to seventy eight calls for service in the first quarter, including multiple structure fires, one of them during a snowstorm, several boats on fire on land, also during a snowstorm, and an explosion in a gas oven. And I was quite pleased to read about the recognition for our bylaw officers who alerted the residents during one of our events. Annual preventative pump maintenance was performed on all apparatus and they were cleared for another year of operation. And there was some minor flooding at the Chastle Road Fire Hall, which will need some further investigation. The fire prevention team completed eighty one fire and life safety inspections, nine referrals, six fire investigations, and the fire department participated in the elementary school egg drops, did a safety talk at a local care facility, and visited a local daycare. The fire prevention and life safety officer was also requested to speak with a small group of secondary students about the dangers of lighting fires. The Sunshine Coast has seen twelve new neighborhoods get recognized under the Fire Smart Canada Recognized Neighborhood Program this year. Two of the recognized neighborhoods are within our fire protection district, um, with Wood Creek Park and Sherwood Grove. The Gibson's and District Public Library Fire Smart Program continues to be popular with children, and we'll see Fire Smart Storytimes continuing in twenty twenty five. And I'm happy to answer any questions that mayor council may have.
Questions? Councillor Crowell.
Thank you, Mayor White. And it's not so much a question, but well, I guess it is a question. I seem to have read somewhere that the Gibson's Fire Department, of all the fire departments who participated in the stair climb, raised the most money as an individual firefighting unit. Is that correct?
That, yeah, that's correct. I don't like to be too competitive when it's something like this, but we had a healthy competition amongst our local fire departments and a tremendous effort from our team. I was very, very impressed with not only the amount of fundraising, but their times that they accomplished doing the climb up forty eight stories in full gear, including their packs.
And I, I think it's, you know, I think it should go, um, there should, it should be acknowledged because the Gibson's Fire Department in other events sort of leads the pack on fundraising, like the elves' club drive every year. Your department raises far more than any of the other departments on the coast and actually puts, you know, larger units from other cities to shame. So I, I think you should, um, you know, kudos really to you and, and your, your team because they, they do an amazing job. Not only their job, but above and beyond their job. So I think you should toot your own horn occasionally.
Well. I'll qualify, nobody should be ashamed about fundraising. I could understand why. It isn't so competitive to, to you.
Well, and it is the community that is.
Yeah, it is a great, great, great work by our community and the department. Councillor Lumley.
Your report says you expect a rise in call volumes. Where, where, where'd you base that on? I mean, there's lots of fire prevention, you have safety inspections, you're almost like you, the pie is a lot larger with all these safety inspections, you'd only assume that all this kind of pre-work call volumes hopefully would be down, but you're saying you expect a rise in call volumes.
Yeah, one of our consultants, I think back from twenty eighteen, I think, said it best. And there were three main drivers to call volumes in our fire services, and they were men, women, and children. So with the growing population, you can expect a growing amount of calls or demand for service.
No more questions? Okay, thank you very much for another quarter.
Thank you very much.
And I do not see Staff Sergeant Prunty here, um, which can make sense as our emergency services people tend to have emergencies. Um, but it's possible she still may show up. So we'll go to Planning and Development Services as a, uh, building inspector, building, chief building official is going to do the report.
Leslie Ann's away this week, so I'm filling in, but it's mostly planning-related content in her report, obviously. So I can answer any questions as best as I can. And if not, I can take note and have Leslie Ann follow up for you.
Maybe our, maybe our C I O could help with some too, if there's ones that he knows about. Councillor Deandrade.
Thank you. Uh, my first question, I, I would like to know the status of the ten large developments. Hopefully you can give us, I mean, there's the George, the Harbor, Gospa Rock, Eagle View's height, the four large project in Gibson's Way, eight to six, eight three five, ten fifty seven Longman, and then the two North Road. I haven't, you know, I know North Road was recently approved, but it's important.
Just a small question.
Well, maybe it would be.
Is there anyone in particular that you want to, I, I don't.
Well, people ask me too, and I don't know.
But the report should say.
The report doesn't say, or at least I didn't.
Process.
I couldn't read, identify, thank you.
Uh, I don't, I don't know if that's a fair que, I mean, can you try? Like, maybe you can touch on one or, or one or another that you know about?
Yeah, I mean, there's mixed responses for different projects, of course. Eagle View is still underway and projected timelines differ between the different buildings on the property and the permitting. We've been working with the developers to try to come to a close, but the ball's in their court, so to speak. Um, the ten fifty seven, I believe, is, is on hold for the time being. Um, there's, i- it's hard for developers. Um, but I, I think right now there's not much going on with that property. Um, the North Road developments, we have, uh, we just issued a demo permit for six seven two, and we have a building permit application for six seven two. Um, the other one, uh, seven one eight, uh, we've yet to receive a building permit application, but we've been in discussions with the developers. So, you know, that's happening, but we don't have that application yet. Um, the Longman ones, uh, I believe things are still moving along with that, but I've been out of the loop as far as, uh, there's, there's no building permit application for those yet either. So, um, like I said, yeah, it, it's a hard question to answer, multiple developments, but we can get some, some further answers for you.
Councillor Thompson.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. It was a question regards to the Housing Accelerator Fund. When we're looking at the growth target rates, does that one thirteen in excess of the fifty eight target, does that fall into the, to the next, um, growth quarter? Does it get reflected in sections or as a whole?
Those numbers I'm not familiar with.
Okay, it's page fifty.
Said thirty eight?
Fifty eight, I think it is. I noted.
If anyone knows what numbers, recognizes those, those numbers, you can feel free to put up your hand if you have an answer. C I O.
Through you, Ms. Mayor, the, uh, the one thirteen are essentially, they were for twenty twenty four. Those were the, uh, so we, we have a challenge for this year. I don't know where we sit just yet and what might come in. Um, but with your question whether the difference in the one thirteen gets applied to the, the following year, I don't believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Don't believe so.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Councillor Lumley.
Yeah, through the mayor, I have a couple of questions. My first one is only because someone asked me, because I know there was a new sign put up at the George site. I think, I think that's somebody was telling me that the George is going ahead. Um, and I know, I get it. I mean, I don't get all my information about the George from the public, but this was the perception from the public. I was, that was one of my questions is like, I don't know, kind of gently, like, where is it? Is it, is it going to come back before council or?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you would know, like, it shouldn't be someone from the public telling you that it's happening.
That's, that's the word on the street.
Yeah, okay.
Is.
Director of Infrastructure or C I O?
I'm just trying to pass that one over to the C I O.
Okay, C I O.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. They, through you. So the George, uh, the application is active. Uh, at the moment, we're reviewing the geotechnical report with, last year we received a version earlier in the year that got reviewed for, uh, for, by the town's peer reviewer for, that was sent back. And we, over the last month, we received another response from the George, uh, team. And, um, that is the present, it's being reviewed sort of as we speak, but that only deals with D P, um, development permit number nine for aquifer protection, which is sort of the primary. And everything else is essentially on hold until that question gets resolved. So, uh, it, it isn't going ahead. It is still addressing the question of geotech. And, uh, and that's, that's where we sit today, but no, no further parts of that project are moving forward at the moment because of this question.
Thank you so much. Uh, now my next question, which I don't know if you can answer, but I know, I noticed that Sue was in the audience. Um, this weekend, there was more than one, more than two people walking their cats. And I, I know that the report has dog licenses, yeah. Do people, like, do cat owners require a license? And I only, I only asked this because this, this girl was walking her cat by the restaurant and a dog charged at it. Um, so then there was this kerfuffle because I guess, I mean, I mean, I guess that's the, the old adage that obviously dogs don't like cats, but, um, I just wasn't sure. And then there was another gentleman, I saw him taking a picture, um, like right beside the station there in the corner, and he had his cat on his shoulder. So he was walking around town with his cat on his, I don't know, I just wondered if there was a cat license or, I guess, I don't know, it's just strange.
Here, here, sure, good for the, the cans of worms today. Um, yeah, actually, I mean, it's funny, you should, you should ask that because, yeah, somebody told me that a cat bylaw was coming this weekend too. And I said, well, maybe, but it's not, I don't think it's what you think it is. Uh, but I think, I think you'll need to come to the mic, Sue.
So we are, we're working on the new animal care and control bylaw, actually getting very close now, and we're hoping to do a council workshop, I believe, next month. And some of the ideas are roundabout licensing cats or not licensing them, or at least requiring that they have identification. So I think that's a discussion we, we need to have, sit down and have. But at the present time, through you, Mayor, there's no cat licensing.
Thank you. See, it's a pretty good question.
Yeah. Okay, got your answer. Councillor Crowell.
Um, thank you, Mayor White, and through you. Um, with regard to identification, do, do you, does, do our, does our bylaw department have a chip reader? Or do you have to take the animal to somewhere to have them read?
We share a chip reader with the S C R D, uh, but they have it right now. But if we find an animal, we usually can take it straight to a vet's and they can do the chip reading for us. So I think if we're thinking in terms of identification, we would be requiring that it either be microchipped or tattooed. Um, that's if you allow your cat to go outside.
Okay, I want to state, I really appreciate that, that staff has recognized we need a council workshop on this. And we're not having it now, though. Okay, Councillor Deandrade.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a page fifty of the report and regards development permit number one. And it talks about, uh, the two figures, right? I mean, there are two scenarios, a two, uh, two D mod, two D model of Charman Creek. And the first scenario, it's figure fifteen, and the second is figure seventeen. And they say, uh, the figures show how remove a replacement of one bridge on Charman Creek can impact several properties downstream. And when I see the figure, it feels that without the, the bridge, it, it gets drier. But I didn't understand, is this a positive impact, a negative impact, or is it a positive impact for the environment and a negative on property? So just.
Uh, through you, Ms. Mayor. Um, it's a positive impact. So the, the figure fifteen shows, uh, like the current conditions without the creek restoration project that we have planned. Um, so that, that creek restoration project includes the upsizing of the culvert at Glassford Road, um, and then a removal of a concrete bridge that currently is a restriction within the creek. So when we did the two D modeling, it showed what would happen under future climate scenarios, like a one in two hundred year flood, which is what the planning department would use for like flood construction levels, et cetera. Um, and so it shows that the removal of that one concrete structure coupled with the replacement of the culvert upstream would result in less and minimal flooding downstream. So the purposes of that flood modeling was to determine the extent, the potential extent of the D P A one area for flood hazard. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for the Planning and Development Services report? Okay, thank you. We will move on to the Infrastructure Services Department quarter one report. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, I'll just, um, highlight some of the key, uh, pieces from the various services for the infrastructure department for the quarter. As you'll see, there's a bit of a new layout to the quarterly report compared to previous years, trying to bring attention to the advancement of the strategic priorities as laid out in the council strategic plan, and then focusing on, uh, kind of work within our functions rather than positions. So just, it's a little bit more of a unified report. Um, as you can kind of see on the first page, there's, uh, quite a bit of vacancies within the department, staffing, uh, towards the end of the quarter. So currently faced with six vacancies, I can see that, uh, I was hoping to have more, um, definitive response, but we have a really exciting offer letter out right now to fill one of the vacancies for engineering technician, hoping to have, uh, a returned offer letter and make an announcement in the coming days. Beyond that, uh, there's strategic priorities. Uh, anything that made any significant advancement throughout the quarter is identified. That includes the completion of the, uh, B C Hydro E V station that the town facilitated at the Gibson's Area Community Center. So that is now up and operational. Uh, identify kind of advancement of some of our policy projects, including the D C C bylaw and the aquifer protection regulation. Uh, the new aquifer protection bylaw should be ready in draft form for, uh, committee in May. That's our current timeline. Um, resiliency, uh, just thought it would be worth identifying that , uh, following the magnitude five point one earthquake in February, staff, uh, you know, after evacuating and mustering, um, staff from our operations crews did, uh, visual inspections of kind of all the key infrastructure that we were able to do and, and identified no immediate signs of damage as a result of the earthquake, which was positive to see. Um, in development, um, they, I guess maybe just to add on the, the response from the chief building inspector was the, um, Eagle View, there's been quite a bit of progress made on the offsite works on Win and Stewart Road to, uh, service, uh, the, the current phase of construction. And the most recent timeline that I've received from the developer's engineer is around, uh, end of quarter two, all construction of the offsite work should be complete. Um, and in operations, it was, uh, you know, kind of a typical busy quarter. Um, in the wastewater system, the centrifuge was, uh, unfortunately offline due to some mechanical failure for a number of days, I believe, yeah, roughly a month. Um, so that adds a fair bit of stress and increases the operating costs. But due to the, you know, dedicated work of our operating staff and management, we're able to come up with a alternative arrangement than to having to haul directly to Dusty Road, um, to the District of Seashell's septic handling facility there. And we were also able to get a service technician expedited to site and they affected a repair. Now the centrifuge is back in operation. And, uh, we're looking for the capital replacement of that unit. Uh, contract was awarded for construction and, uh, it'll be replaced pending the arrival of all the equipment from, right now, one of the pieces is under fabrication in Italy. So that's the, kind of the last piece before we can get that replaced. Um, nothing overly notable in water or, in water or wastewater. Um, and then transportation and parks operation was a lot of, uh, snow response over the winter. And the, uh, traffic or the, uh, traffic yet pattern changed with the speed reduction around five corners that was affected in the beginning of February. Um, it's been brought to our attention, uh, in recent weeks that there's some confusion around specifically school roads. So we reviewed the signage on school road and, um, added some signage just with what we had in stock. Certainly they're not all standard and we are, uh, just waiting for those, kind of the more standard signs to be delivered. And then we'll fully, uh, swap out the ones that are up there right now that are not current standard. But the intention was, uh, when we got the approval from council to have the entirety of school road be, uh, reduced to thirty kilometers an hour. So now we've added additional signage, just to clarify, that's the intent. And, uh, in parks as well, I'll just note that the step at the bottom of, uh, um, Pebbles Beach was installed in the first week of April. So it wasn't actually in here that it was completed, but it has, it was completed in the first week of April. So now the stairs are fully complete and there's a ribbon cutting ceremony, I believe, scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. Uh, I'll pass that over to council for any questions.
Councillor Deandrade.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this regard to parking strategy, I, obviously I have a little bit concern with the parking strategy because reduction, I'm, I have concerns that we get to a point that everybody has to park on the street, but we also have tourism. Our population basically doubles during tourism season. So my question is, is the parking strategy working with the tourism impact? Or are they going to just look at from comparison with Vancouver or something like that? But I wonder if this is going to be taken into account.
Better not be just comparing with Vancouver. That's, uh, I don't think that's our intent. It's, it's for Gibson's. So, but I don't know, I don't know if the Director of Infrastructure's leading the oversight of that, but, uh, we'll see what he knows, yeah.
So through the mayor, I, I'm not leading that project. It's being led by planning. It was just referenced in here as a, um, because there is some relevance to infrastructure. I have been involved with reviewing, um, some of the, uh, outputs of that. Mostly my focus will be on specifically when they get into identifying areas where there's more on-street parking required and just thinking about the, the impact that that'll have on the infrastructure and the, the streetscape. Uh, certainly it is taken into consideration the impacts of tourism and, and looking at, um, uh, the fluctuation in population. Uh, I'm not sure the exact methodology without having to go back through. I know that there was a work plan that was presented and, and kind of supported by the committee, um, earlier in the year. And it would have, basically they'll just be working through the work plan that, that would have been, uh, shared with, with the committee.
Councillors, any more infrastructure questions? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. That's just a curiosity. Uh, I know the A T, uh, grant, the national active was submitted on twenty six, but is there any prediction when are we receiving that?
Uh, through the mayor, I'd have to, uh, I'd have to look into that. I think I recall it being, uh, about three months is what we were hoping as far as a timeline from when we submitted, but I, I don't know that for certain. Um, with the federal election, it could be a little bit unpredictable. Um, we may be waiting until the fall for that, both that one and the, uh, outfall grant application as well, because they're both federally administered.
Councillor Lumley.
Yeah, through the mayor, I know that I, you briefly may, might have told me during budget, but obviously during budget, there's, uh, it's either cutting taxes or raising revenues. And I, I had mentioned, and I think that you had said, I was just going to confirm this now that we're here, that the, the paid for parking would be, like, that's being included in the, uh, uh, in this report, like the, the, I, I, any ideas or the option of developing a, a paid parking. Um, it's gonna, is that's gonna be part of this, this report, right?
So it's not through the mayor, it's to the mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, that, that's, that was my understanding. And when, when we first started talking about the parking study, it was, it was about that, was, as, as one of the definite options and concerns. Yeah. C I O? Moving your mic, yeah.
Yeah, through you, Ms. Mayor. I'll just make something up. No, we're, uh, the first, there's, there's two, two distinct studies, one on the private, which is, I think, council might have seen that one already. But essentially, that's the one that more of a policy perspective on the parking requirements for development under the zoning and so on. That's, it's, it's done to speak of, to, so to speak. The second part, which I think it's probably the one, I think it's more interesting, is what to do with parking around public areas, which is more to your question. Uh, and, and paying for parking likely will show up as one of the options for council to consider, how much and where and, and so on, because we quickly, running out of parking and running out of options to enforce it, aside from, you know, uh, an old chalk on the tire doesn't seem to really move people much anymore. So I think we need different options, including easy of pay and so on, as others have pointed out. So I think you'll, you'll, you'll see options for council in the next report, I'm sure.
Thank you. Any more questions? Moving on to Corporate Administration Legislative Services. We have that, that report, uh, in front of us.
Through you, Ms. Mayor, while the, the mic's still hot, I'll just get us going. We're primarily focused on the strategic plan for my end. We're primarily focused on the strategic plan from my end of things. We're, we have a session coming up with council on May 6 to advance, continue to work through that. And so we've been trying to stay current, and including what's on, on the website as well, with the actions, and every department contributes to this document. The, the rest of the report, I want to, Tracy's here to lead that, and I want to also recognize Rebecca's not here with us today, but all the folks that work on this report, like Heidi and Lisa and Yvonne, and Bronwyn, and the whole ICBC team, so we, there's a lot of folks behind this, just like in every other department. So I, I'll, maybe I'll ask Tracy to highlight some portions on, on her, the rest of the report, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll just give a highlight of the Corporate and Legislative Services for the quarter. So drafted Development Cost Charges by law for, sorry, number 1329, and consolidated other bylaws, supported new member orientation and administrative updates for the Advisory Design Panel, issued two properties with notice on title, provided the Accessibility Committee revisions for the terms of reference, and supported hiring consultant for the accessibility plan. Multiple contract agreements were finalized or are in progress, including playground encroachments, childcare, and heritage leases. Several, several FOI requests were processed, including a complex Marina lease inquiry. And then some other legislative matters, researched the Downtown Business Association Improvement Area Services, artificial intelligence use, earthquake preparedness, and participated in land use strategy meetings. That was Rebecca. So from my side of the House, the Gibson's Landing Harbor Authority adopted their new bylaw on February the 24th of this year. Currently preparing electoral approval process for the boundary extension for the five properties to come into the Town of Gibson's. That kicks off this Friday with the first advertising going out. For the public use and filming permits, we've had four public use permits for that quarter and two filming permits, and we're now collecting data for how much revenue we're bringing in for the filming, which is new for us. For IT services, tech setups, regular site visits with Cloud Nine, and Cloud Nine processed 102 support tickets in the quarter. We're still awaiting the Emergency Operations Grant, which we applied for earlier this year in the amount of $40,000 for equipment, training, and tabletop exercises. And our OHNS meetings continue monthly with site inspections for all our facilities. I'll just go over to the, for Bronwyn's piece, budget, budget community dialogues with 50 participants, signage projects. So installed new Molly's Lane directional signs, water deckels for the vehicles, water vehicles was completed. Save the Persephone Campaign, community photo call-out launched, raised $8,669, began an IA P2 toolkit, and website development is in progress, and some other metrics and whatnot. But, and one thing I did want to point out is our archival system at 494 is now installed, which is a big deal and finally completed.
And we saw, we all saw photos of that in the report as well. Any questions? Counselor DeAndrati.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, before my question, I just want to acknowledge, I was so happy to see the recording system, because when I remember seeing the boxes in, spread through the town, and so this is amazing. My question regards the strategic planning and is on page 83 and 84, and the items are 8.4, 9.4, and 9.5, and it's probably my new, that are our corporate, corporate, no, sorry, chief administrator. And my question is, in the past, we were doing the monitoring. So when you say Aquifer 560, I knew it was our report. So on 8.4, it talks, it talks about the town working with the S C R D, and engineers consultant have compiled data and are developing the final report, okay? And then on 9.4, there's a monitoring, and the data collection is ongoing, and consultants and is working on updating the model. So my question is, is, well, and then on 9.5, there's a series of projects for the water management plan. So when the town now is doing weather monitoring, but when it's talking about 560, are we now seeing the work together with the S C R D? And this report, the updating model that is coming, does it include the other lobes?
Probably see that in the final report that we'll get, the One Water Strategy that was mentioned in the Infrastructure Services report that I saw, anyway.
Yeah, thank you. So through the mayor, our intention is to bring a update to the modeling and monitoring work from the previous year to committee in May as well. We're kind of, have a couple of water-related reports kind of aligned around the start of summer season. So we're intending to report that out in May. The, we have shared some data with the Regional District, and they have likewise shared, shared some information as well, which is expanding the, the breadth of the knowledge of the Aquifer. So there will be an update, I haven't seen it in its final form yet, but there will be, there should be some reference to the, the lobes outside of the, the kind of the Gibson's lobe and into the Soames and Elphinstone lobes as well, included in that report, based on some information that we've received from the Regional District.
And are we being financially responsible for that only, or now there's? I'm just trying to understand, is this our report that we will get some input from them? Or we are really doing a, a report together with the S C R D?
CAO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So it's actually interchangeably, we're talking about three separate reports. In the context of that, not getting too many details, but this report, it's talked about in 8.4. That's the One Water Strategy, which is, you know, the optimization of the engineered water distribution systems between the town and the S C R D. And that's the study that goes with the Aquifer 560 agreement. So that's, we both service properties more efficiently and distributed water around this area. So that's sort of the, one of the reports. The Aquifer report, as you may recall, that was updated in 2023, was the last version. So in that context, it's the Aquifer Mapping Report Update. And, and then there's the, the report on the annual monitoring, which is a separate piece as opposed to the actual Aquifer leapfrog model. So we talk about three reports. In terms of paying, the, the One Water Strategy, each party pays their share. So we, we kind of share the cost of that with the S C R D. And we did that as well with, shared the cost of installing monitoring, extending the monitoring within the watershed, particularly for the Charman Creek area, or the Chaster Creek area, which the S C R D paid their share as well. And the Aquifer annual update, or not annual update, but the Aquifer Mapping Update, the town pays for that out of our own water utility and at times with grants as well. That's roughly how we split those.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Counselor Lumley.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One was like, is, like, is the Downtown Business Improvement Association, is that like a brand-new association, or look?
No, it's not, there's, there's some, a couple business owners and residents have been inquiring about how you might start one up. So our Director of Corporate Administration looked into the municipal side of what we would need to do for that, and provided them with some information.
Okay.
Through, through me, which I can share with you and anyone else on council who's interested.
Okay, thank you.
So I can, if, if you're interested, I'll, I'll show that to everybody.
The other one is the Bylaw Screening Officer role. What is, what would, I know it says here some consideration of need and capacity. What would the Bylaw Screening Officer, what would that be, that job?
I didn't see that, so I'll go to our CAO.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, our bylaws require a process by law enforcement by law. And so we, we need to have a process for, for folks that get a ticket to dispute that ticket. And there's a screening officer, somebody that it's not the person that issues the ticket, somebody that disputes a resident or a businessperson that disputes a ticket has the right to be heard. In that sense, in the, under the bylaw, the screening officer is the person designated to hear that person, to just check that the process, primarily, did the process get followed according to the bylaw? If there's a dispute there, and the person still doesn't agree to pay, then there's another process, it's a provincial matter called an adjudication. Then it's a, it's a bit like an arbitrator, then the bylaw needs to go through that. So that's what that is in reference with, and we're in the process of the adjudication part. The corporate officer typically acts as the screening officer, this is what we're doing in this case. And if things get still disputed, then we'll have to essentially apply to a provincial body that has folks that act as adjudicators in the case.
Any other questions on that quarterly report? Counselor Lumley?
Sorry, just a, maybe a side point. I know we've already discussed parking, and I know that the Molly's Lane access and so on and so forth is brought up. I just, there, I don't know if anyone's aware, I don't know if there should be signs or if they're missing, but people are parking in the fire lane, because I think there's, it's so busy down there now, and for sure, like, you know, like, like, like the Black Bean at Molly's is very busy, and people just can't find parking, so they're just parking in the fire lane, like.
Of Molly's?
Right beside.
In Molly's Lane?
Yeah, in Molly's Lane.
God, there's hardly even, there's hardly even a fire lane, I don't know how you, it's just, okay.
Well, it makes it difficult for everybody, garbage trucks.
Nobody can even drive through there if that's the case, so I mean, yeah, that hasn't, that would need to be enforced right away.
There's no signage, but I don't know if that's a, an area that, maybe that's for planning, I guess, to, to ensure that people don't park there, but they just are, so I was just bringing it.
Well, call it in.
I just did.
If you see it, yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that would be very disruptive, I think people are parking there. Director of Infrastructure.
If I may, just on that point through the mayor, I believe that there is signage on both sides of the lane saying that there's no parking and identifying it as a fire lane, but we can review that just to make sure that that's there. But you can only do so much with signage, there's an element of human behavior that's unavoidable.
Yep. Still on Corporate Administration Legislative Services. Go ahead, Counselor DeAndrati.
That's HR, I.
No, we're not at HR yet.
Oh, we are not yet, okay, sorry.
Let's go to it, though. We're, we're Finance and HR, is there any introduction? We've already got a question for you, so we can jump right to that.
Yes, Mayor White, I just asked Noni to come and attend the meeting briefly with council today. This is the last meeting being held, she retires from the town this Friday. I know I've enjoyed very much working with her, and so, anyway, just so you knew, it's this week.
I think she's been setting up those processes for the last few months. All, all the checks will still go out, Noni's been working hard on transition, which we really appreciate. And, you know, certainly appreciate all, all her work and the, the couple of years that I've been here, for sure, and prior to that. And Counselor DeAndrati has an HR question to kick things off for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to acknowledge that I can, I saw a huge improve in HR, because we didn't, we didn't really had a HR person dedicated, and I could see the difference over the years. And I see a series of deferred projects that hopefully some of them will be completed this year, but they would strengthen. But I, but I'm, I would like just to hear if the, the four people that left the Infrastructure Department, right, is it something that perhaps with all the implementation of the, the rest of the projects, if we would be able to avoid of this is just normal things, expected? Thank you.
Normal things, I think, expected is probably the good summary of that. I've, I've heard about all the reasons, I mean, it's not, probably not, it might be more of a conversation in an in-camera meeting if we're talking about individual HR, but we had people with different, you know, different career opportunities and personal life of wanting to return to places they've lived in the past and things like this. It's pretty typical of what we've seen over, over the last couple of years. I don't think there's any kind of obvious trend. That's what I, my, my feeling of it, to, to talk about it at a high level. Director of Finance?
Mayor White, you're exactly correct. There's been reasonable reasons why people have left, and they're all completely different. And it just turned out that it happened more or less in the same quarter. So we'll go through the process of, of replacing them, and wishing them the best.
Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's in regard to the property taxes, the arrears and delinquent increase from March 2024 and 2025. Is that relative to an increase in doors? Or is this something that is standing out unrelated and specific to economy? I'm curious about that increase.
That, I definitely don't know the answer to myself, so I'm going to look to our Director of Finance.
Through Mayor White, the Finance Department's view is this is in part due to, there's normally annual reminders that go out very much near the end of the calendar year on unpaid balances, and with the postal strike, it, it did go out, but not at the end of the year, in the first quarter. So that certainly had some impact. The actual change in balance versus the total size of taxation in the end, isn't that significant? So it's hard to really decide that it represents anything. If we saw, if we were a year away from now and it had gone up again, then we'd know for sure that we've got a trend going on, and some people are having a hard time paying their, their taxation on time. But I don't think we can conclude that just yet.
Any other questions? This report. Seeing none, our next committee, the whole meeting, is May 20th, 2025, 3:30 PM. And of course, we also have a council meeting this afternoon as well at 3:30. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Kroll, seconded by Counselor Lumley, all those in favor? I think the motion carries, yeah, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I'll see you at 3:30.